Hey there, how's it going?
Hi there. Doing well, how are you?
Good, how about you?
Good. I'm pretty good. I'm
Awesome.
heating up in my little Zoom room here.
Hey, so I was gonna ask, are you outside? It kinda looks like you might be outside.
Yeah, it's a little, it's a little like A-frame that my husband built.
Oh my god, that's awesome.
Have a little space away from everybody, little separation.
That's awesome.
It's worked out pretty well, actually.
I bet. My husband downloaded plans a little while ago for for an A-frame like that, that they're like pretty easy to build, I guess. So I might need to like get on him to like build me my little outside workspace.
There you go, yeah. Oh man.
Alright. We're just waiting on a couple more, right?
Yeah, I think there's Chris. And Catherine, you still have that document to pull up to work through together, yes?
Yep, I do.
Okay, okay, awesome. Alright. Excellent. I don't know that we necessarily expect anybody else to join us. Kayla, Jeff, are you expecting?
Do you need to wait and we get started?
I think we can get started.
Okay, excellent. Alright.
I did not see handbook review trending on Facebook, you know, on the county.
That's funny. I like to complain, but nobody wants to participate in the change.
I know, I know.
And just real quick apologize, I started going through it over the weekend, like I said, I was last week, and didn't get finished, and then unfortunately this week has been a sprint. So I apologize for not getting my comment, but then I decided, well, if I can't get through all of it, I would just wait till we finish going through it today, and then I can add the comments I started on the old version into the new one.
For sure. Yeah, that sounds like a great plan. I think there's, we've got some time. I don't know necessarily what the deadline is on your end, but I can definitely kind of pause after today's meeting, wait for any additional comments to roll in, and then incorporate those into a final draft, so that works for me.
Sounds like a great plan. Yeah, well, great.
Alright, so we left off last time at pay practices, so we'll just start here. There weren't any specific comments on this section, the equal pay for equal worked, but I do think it is worth mentioning, since it is a new law, it is a new policy, it is totally optional for you to include in the handbook, you do not need to, it's not required by law, but I think it does, I think it does create transparency and just outlines that, what the expectations are in regards to pay differentials, that they must be based on certain criteria that are listed here. So if this is a document that you think your HR department managers will be referencing when they're making those decisions, then it may be good to live in here, but also totally optional. So really, this is your discretion.
Things are kinda breaking up, so I'm gonna turn my video off, just I hope that'll enhance my bandwidth, but I'm still here.
Okay. Alright, so then next up is shift differential pay. This is something, Kayla, that you wrote, that you had not offered this in the past, but I, I thought that maybe this was something, it kind of ties into the on-call pay that we had a conversation about when we initially met, that you are offering a premium pay if someone is working in the evenings, or if they're working, if they come back to work. So these kind of tie together. We, there's no, again, legal requirement to include this here, and we can certainly take it out if it hasn't been something that you've offered, then I'm thinking that we remove it and maybe focus on the on-call time and how to best define that. So, yeah, what are your thoughts on this one, since that had a comment?
I have a tendency to agree with you on that.
Okay. Alright.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay. Um, so then we did have a conversation about on-call time, and I guess my question, and I think that you were applying this when an employee might come back to work after they have left for the day, then you would consider that on-call, or, you know, with exempt employees, you really don't need to provide that. This is really just applying to non-exempt employees. So tell me a little bit more about kind of your use of this, and kind of how you see this working with your organization.
So with that on-call pay, I believe it would, would be something that exempt employees have even asked about as well, and I think it kind of meshes in with the flex time concept, I guess, if you will. And so there, it feels like inequity to some of those departments that have to stay on-call, like, you know, there's a facility in use, and something happens at the facility, and they're on-call for the weekend that the facility is in use, which limits their ability to, like, go places or partake in social situations, or participate in social situations, or whatever that looks like. And so I just, I think that that has kind of been a point of contention for us. Sarah, do you have any comments on that, or any considerations on that? I just wanna, wanna be sure to be clear with that with employees, because I think that there is a misconception that we should have to pay them for time that they're scheduled to be on-call, so that if there's something that goes on, then they can answer that.
Yeah, I think, um, I think part of it is being clearer, or maybe us better organizing, like a group of exempt employees, I'm thinking with like regards to a facility and maybe recreation programming, if the rep director, the public works director, or, you know, there are three people who rotate, like, being responsible or something, should something occur, maybe we can address it that way with exempt employees, but also, you know, we kinda, I think the place we might see this the most is with maintenance employees and being on-call, should there be a leak, you know, in a bathroom, or something happen at a facility unexpectedly.
And how often are they, I mean, how often would a maintenance employee, a non-exempt maintenance employee be on-call in a typical, like?
So I see Amber Hopdon, she might be able to elaborate a little bit more about that, because it typically would be her department and maintenance, right, Sarah?
Yeah, yeah. And I think, again, if there's a couple ways to address some, or to provide some of the clarity around that, based on how we want to approach that with shift, you know, scheduling or flex time. But, yeah, I'll offer Amber, I was looking out the window and not at the screen, I don't know at what point she joined, so if Amber would like to, to comment on our on-call policy and some experience from her perspective, that'd be great. Cannot hear you, Amber.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, I was really just here to listen, but I'm happy to share. I think that the, probably the best example of this that's happening right now, for example, is that our winter facilities are open. They are open on Saturday and Sundays, when we don't have full-time staff in the building. So the five of us, you know, I'm exempt, so I don't really include myself, but the four other full-time staff in our department are non-exempt. We all rotate weekends, so that somebody can be in town and on-call in case our part-time staff people that are in the buildings have a problem, whether they're low on change, there's an accident at the tubing hill, the parking lot didn't get plowed, they've locked themselves out of the building, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So when those staff people are on-call, they're really not able to use their time as their own, you know? Like Kayla mentioned, they can't partake in particular social situations, they can't leave town, and they're really kind of stuck here for that Saturday and Sunday timeframe. So that is when we find ourselves compensating those employees with that stipend.
Got it. So based on what I'm hearing, it sounds like it's maybe once a month that they would be in that situation, and I do recognize that, yes, that is an inconvenience, that they might not be able to partake in social activities or leave town, but it's not every weekend, and I believe that the way that the Colorado comp sorter, that they write that as time worked or on-call time, that they would not look at that as something that needed to be compensated, that it would, the employee is generally free to do what they are, to leave the premise, to use their own time. It might be worth a call, and I'm happy to do that, make a call just to CDLE, to just confirm that they agree with that. So if that's the case, then it really does not need to be compensated, and it would be, at that point, your discretion. If and how, if you want to add that as a perk, then you can certainly do that, but I would just make sure to apply that fairly and consistently, so that it is equitable across all employees, across all, like, the entire organization is following that same practice. That's where I think it could get a little tricky, is if you're offering this on-call pay to this one department, and then maybe not another, so that's where it might tie into an overall compensation plan. Yeah, but I saw you unmuted, Chris, what are your thoughts?
Well, I was just gonna, actually, we're on the same wavelength, because you were pretty much saying everything I was getting ready to say in terms of the compensability of the time and stuff. And so, and then also the point that you made about consistency, you know, I think if you're gonna have an on-call policy, it has to be applied consistently across all departments. It can't be kind of pick and choose depending on what the circumstances are, because of the risk of someone claiming that they were treated unfairly, not because the policy wasn't applied the way they wanted to, but because it was applied in a way that someone else who wasn't like them got a better benefit than they did, or something. So I think that would be my concern with it, and it's, you know, the, in terms of the Fair Labor Standards Act, and what the federal courts have, so when they look at it, is, you know, the defining way to think about it is whether the employee has been engaged to wait. If their, if their free time is so encumbered by waiting to be called in, then it essentially, they come down and say, that's compensable time, because they can't go about their normal day-to-day activities, because they're actually waiting to be called. So, you know, I think that's, it's, but the other side too, that I was gonna say, is that each of these, when it comes to on-call payment, it's kind of a case-by-case basis, that you have to look at it, you know, for categories of the type of work that's being done, not specifically the employee, but the category, you know, what category the employee's in, the type of work that they're engaged to do, and that type of thing. So I think it might be something that, that could be addressed in a job description versus if you're concerned about having a policy, if you will, that you might have to apply consistently across all departments and stuff, you could perhaps address it through the job description to identify which positions would be subject to on-call time, if that makes sense.
Chris, would that then exempt the, would this exempt the standalone policy that we have for the Department of Human Services?
What do you mean, would it exempt it? Like, I mean, you can have a different policy, what, the point I was trying to make is you can have a different policy for different departments, as long as within that classification, within that department, that employee classification, you're treating everybody the same way.
Yeah, and I think it, I think that the policy is only applicable to social workers, child welfare staff and adult protective staff, but I will get a copy of that and get it to you, just to make sure it's good.
Right.
Alright.
Well, that also comes from the state, Kayla, right?
I don't, I don't know, so I think that when it was, I think when it was presented to the county, and it was the previous director of the Department of Human Services, not Janine, that, that brought that on-call policy, and she said that it was something that came from the state. So I just asked Janine to send me that, so that we can verify that to make, to make sure that that is done appropriately, and if we need to reword it, or include it here, or put it in a specific place, we can do that.
Great. So then, the flex time policy was another that we had discussed during our initial meeting, and I have worked in organizations that have this similar kind of entitlement, I guess, with employees sometimes will feel entitled to maintaining their 40-hour work week. So my intention with how I wrote this is to really outline how that might look for a non-exempt employee, and how exempt employees are expected to perform their duties regardless of their working hours, and that it's really up to their supervisor and working as a team to establish if what you call flex time might be granted, which is basically just allowing them some additional time off without any reduction to their pay. So I think just wording it in a way that it's, it's really up to the manager to approve time off, and it's not something that you work 41 hours, you automatically get an hour off next week, things like that. So I'm curious how this aligns with what your experience has been with this policy.
Um, I think it's kind of been done on a department-by-department basis, really, right now, maybe Amber, sorry to call on you again, but I think that you have a, probably the best example of how this has been done, if you feel comfortable sharing your, your experience.
Sorry, I was typing, and I wasn't fully like tuned in. But I do, you know, we don't have a formal policy in my department, but I do allow staff to flex time in the two-week pay period, so, which may not be appropriate, but we are one of the departments that definitely could go into overtime based on a program or an emergency event or something coming up. So they kind of flex their time back and forth, and if they have 42 hours in week one, they might go home early the following Friday. We have rolled it over to following pay periods before, but we find that the county is so generous with time, and most of us have been here so long, that we don't really need the flex time, because we're usually maxed out on vacation and personal and other time. So I try not to let them roll it too far, just because we have a hard time using it. Sorry, that's probably not super helpful.
Well, it, it is, it actually begs a question that I have when I'm looking at the flex time, because I don't think, the county doesn't have a comp time policy, right?
No, we don't.
As I say, so the flex time is to essentially address what in other, you know, public employment situations might be a comp time type policy, right?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to click, because that's, I wanted to make sure that that's kind of the intent, that the county made the choice not to have a comp time policy for fear, I guess, that, you know, you end up having to perhaps pay it out, or I remember back in the dark ages, when I was a municipal or a county employee in Virginia, and I worked very little the month of December, because I accrued so much comp time during the year usually, that I had to use it all before the end of the year. So I know there's some pitfalls with comp time, but I was just trying to clarify, if the flex time policy is intended to kind of pull out the more positive aspects of a comp time policy for the county without going down the comp time policy route.
I think too, the flex time is like land use that have hearings, or departments that deal with community member boards. Those are other regular examples of, you know, evening or non-typical workday scheduling that I would think we, we want to address or offer some flexibility in, you know, a regular work week.
Great, yeah, and I think that just the way that it's written is it's not always guaranteed. So, yeah, I think providing those accommodations, but not in a way that it would be a guarantee, I think is important, so.
Okay, yeah.
Right? Alright, so moving along to time recording. This was a question that was brought up with regards to whether you want to have exempt staff record their hours. Reading through the handbook, I did notice there was a specific policy on overtime pay for exempt employees during an emergency. So in that particular case, it would be important to have system and systems in place where you can track time, so you know what that overtime payment might look like. And then fail into adherence, specific work schedule can be addressed as a disciplinary issue, and, you know, so in that case, having punches in and out, things like that, might be important. So, again, this is your discretion, but just those were a couple of my comments based on what I read in the handbook. Any thoughts on that?
No, I think that makes sense.
Great. Alright, so I did have a question in regards to the retirement plan. It looks like there are two, and not necessarily everyone participates in both. So I think for the purposes of the handbook, again, we don't have to go into a lot of detail into the, the plan specifics, but we do want to say who is eligible and what those plans are. So are all regular full-time, so anyone working over 30, or is it 40 hours per week, are they eligible to participate in both, both of the plans available?
If you work over 30 hours a week, you're eligible for the 401 plan. If you just are an employee, you are eligible for the 457, I believe.
For any employee?
Yeah.
Got it, okay. So I will clean that up and clarify that. Let's see, so there's a comment here, diving into the paid time off policies. Can we add that we do not pay out sick time upon separation? Yes, that will come into play into the sick time policy, so you do not, under the new Colorado law, you don't have to pay out sick time, so that is fine, but you do continue to pay out vacation. This was another question and topic I know we had about the holiday pay, or paid holidays. So my question is, is the intention to limit an employee from getting overtime and holiday pay on a holiday? I think we can remove this particular bullet point based on the previous three, but I was wondering if you'd had a chance to review the holiday leave, and if this aligns with what we had talked about and what you're currently offering, or what you'd like to offer.
So this is for, like, like Christmas Day, let's say, we considered a paid holiday. So that's what this is in reference to, correct?
Yes, if a full-time, non-exempt employee works any holiday, so for instance, Christmas, the employee will be paid no more than double the employee's hourly wages. So the way that I have read the rest of the policy is that if they work on a holiday, if they work on Christmas, they will get paid time and a half? Is that right? Or is it, is it something different than that?
See, right now, we give them, it's a double time premium, so it's higher than an overtime premium. And our old handbook says that if they work the holiday, and it also is an overtime day, so that, like, let's say for a sheriff's deputy, it's, it falls on a day that is at the end of their 86-hour period, and pushes them into overtime at 90 hours, then those hours would be calculated at double time and a half.
Got it, so you're basically putting a cap on how much they can, on what their rate would be, so it wouldn't be more than that. Yeah, that makes sense, we can totally leave it in, thanks for clarifying that.
Okay. Um, I see, so I do have a question about the eligible exempt employees up there too. So we've, and I forgot to put this in there, I'm sorry to comment on it. We've also seen a lot of questions around, you know, if I work a, work a schedule of 410s, and it's Martin Luther King Day, and I work Tuesday through Friday, then do I not receive the paid holiday benefit, or should I adjust my schedule to be five, eight-hour shifts? And I don't, I don't know if we necessarily have to put that in the handbook, but I, I think we want to have some consistency with how we approach that. And I don't know if you or Chris has any idea of, of how we can approach that in an equal, equitable way?
Yeah, so I think when you're, when you're thinking about exempt employees, and holiday pay is not something that is really regulated by law, so you do have more discretion here on what you want to offer. So with regards to exempt employees, I think it's, it would be your discretion if you want to say that if a Labor Day Monday, an employee is not typically scheduled to work on Monday, then they could take a different day off that week in lieu of that holiday. I know, I did ask Teresa about this, her, her spouse works for Eagle, and she said that when folks are working 410s, and if the, if they are working on a holiday, and they are paid, they are working 410s, and they work on a holiday, then they would get up to 10 hours of that holiday pay. If they are not scheduled to work on the holiday, and they get it paid out, then it's only up to eight hours. So, you know, it is, it is employer discretion on how you want to treat those. I mean, I would think that if you want everyone to be, all of your full-time employees to be eligible for the same approximate amount of time throughout the course of the year, then that's, then offering to let them take a different day off might be appropriate within that same week, but that would really be at your, your discretion.
Yeah, I, I agree, I would just share though, that with exempt employees and other clients that I work with, typically it is that flex schedule, if you will, that Catherine just, just mentioned, where, you know, they, they're allowed, if they're scheduled to work on a holiday, then they're allowed to essentially have a floating holiday that they can take off some other time.
Okay, do you think it would be reasonable for us to include that in that flex policy, or here in this holiday leave policy? Or is that just something that we would do internally with the departments that we oversee based on each individual department's schedule?
I think if we, if you have a consistent policy, if that's the approach you want to take, then I don't see any reason that we wouldn't want to include it here. I mean, the intention of this document is to provide that transparency for employees on how that works. So, yeah, I'll craft some language. employees on how that works. So yeah, I'll craft some language for that and then you can certainly review that and let me know if you feel that's appropriate to leave it in.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Of course. All right. So moving right along to paid personal leave. Just my comment here, it is okay to leave this as is, not paying it out. Oh, actually it is paid out. So okay to leave this here as is. That'd be mindful of future Colorado law that may view personally leave as vacation. Oh, they use it or lose it and the probationary periods might not be permitted. So under Colorado law, you can't reduce a vacation allotment at any time. You can't say at the end of the year, you have twenty-four in your bank and you have to start the next year at zero and then build it up again. So I, it's, it's kind of gray because you call it personal time. So I think it's fine to leave it as is, but just be mindful of that. I think the perhaps better approach might be to say that they will receive a personal leave allocation up to these amounts. And then you're not really saying they're losing anything. It's just the max that you can have in your balance at any one time. And you're making that one deposit on the, on January first. Might be a better way to approach that, just to avoid that if it becomes an issue in the future. Does that make sense how I've described that?
Yeah, I think we might want to get, might want to just reword that a little bit to reflect what, what you were saying there.
Cool. Will do.
Thanks.
All right. So the next one, the big one on paid sick leave. So yes, this, the way that this has been written, it does cover the Healthy Families and Workplaces Act. The separate section below will talk about the pandemic, the public health emergency leave. So this is primarily focused on sick leave. So because there are different reasons, some of them overlap, but there are different reasons that each of these types of leave can be used. So that's why I think it is appropriate to have sick leave and then a different bucket for public health emergency leave. And then basically for this, because this was a benefit that was only offered to full-time employees previously, then under this, I created like this Plan B so that all of the same rules apply, the same reasons for taking leave, the same procedures, who's covered are all the same with the only exception that the part-time, regular, part-time, seasonal, temporary, occasional, those folks will all earn leave at a rate that is slower than your full-time folks. So they still get the benefit. They're getting all of the required requirements under the law net, but just at different tiers so that you can maintain what you're currently offering, offer and then add this additional benefit. Any questions on sick leave? Great.
No, I don't think so. Thanks, Catherine.
And then, yep, we did clarify here that if your employment terminates, you will not be paid for any unused sick leave. And should we include anything about how sick personal vacation is paid through the STD policy? We can include some of that verbiage. I feel like this is going to be on a case-by-case basis. And typically if, if someone needs to take short-term disability or leave of absence, then that might be a role that HR would play in outlining, creating a schedule with the employee to talk about. First you'll use up this leave, then you'll use this, then the time will go unpaid and then short-term disability kicks in. I think there's just a lot of different considerations. Some plans have different waiting periods. So my recommendation is to leave that out and just if they want to know how that, those might interact, we could always put a statement as CHR, if you have any questions on how this, how leave plans can like interact with each other, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
Yep. And I would just say, I think that's helpful based on a few situations we've had recently with the interactions between paid leave, different types of paid leave and short-term disability.
Great. All right. I will. And is your, I'm assuming that it is your HR department that would handle those types of leave requests. Is that correct?
Yes.
Great. Okay. Parental involvement in K-12 Education Act. So this law actually expired in 2015. So again, it is your discretion if you want to leave this. It's not paid time. It's really just providing the opportunity for time away from work for these reasons. Perhaps we could include in the vacation or the personal time that this is what that leave, this is one of those reasons that that leave could be used to clarify that. I think maybe including it might be a little too much. There are a lot of leave policies. So I think where you can condense, it would be great. But yeah, what are your thoughts on, on this one?
I like referencing it with the, the personal leave that you were just talking about.
Cool. Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree. I agree.
Great. And then can we create a form for this? I, I agree anywhere that you can keep documented records of the types of leave that someone is requesting. I am thinking that your HR department hopefully has a form. They probably have one for FMLA, but for other types of leave, I think it would be appropriate for HR to create a form for that reason. So yeah, I would connect with them on that.
Well, and, and I guess Catherine, our question would be, you know, I don't know if you're aware that the county's HR director is on leave right now. And so in terms of creating forms, I know that HR Plus has a library of forms and the county has subscribed to, to the, you know, the overall membership, if you will. You know, if there might be a sample form there. I mean, I can certainly, I've, I've got a variety of different leave forms that I can help create, but I didn't know if there was a, a sample in HR Plus's library for.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I, I just redid one actually because under HFWA, there are specific times that you can request or require documentation. You can always request it. You can only require it after a certain period of time. So I did just recreate one. So if you're looking for something that's kind of an all-encompassing leave request form that might include vacation, sick, personal. The one thing that it is, there are quite different requirements for FMLA and that's where that might, that would be separate. And I believe we do have those as well. So yeah, let me pull those and I can share those resources to see if those might meet your needs.
Okay. Yeah. The county has, has some FMLA forms, pretty much just adopted the ones that the Department of Labor, you know, the samples they created. But as Kayla, I think, was referring to, I don't think they have a catch-all, non-FMLA leave form. So cool to, to get some samples of that.
Yeah, definitely. I think the one that we created should, should definitely meet your purposes. And I can even give it a once-over to make sure that personal vacation sec, all of the perks that you offer are included on there. So yeah, we'll do. All right. Next up, drug and alcohol-free workplace. I just added some verbiage here. If you do have social events where alcohol might come into play, I think it's appropriate to share what those expectations are, just to make sure that there aren't any conflicts here. What are your thoughts? Do you have on occasion? Looks like a picnic or, or things where alcohol might be involved? And do you feel like this would be appropriate language for your team?
I don't, I don't know. And that, I just wanted to, to tag that in there. Because I think that there are departments that do, I, I guess you would call it like team building, that is like socialization and that type of thing. And I don't want it to be a situation where you know, I don't know. I just, Sarah, I saw you were talking. You can go ahead.
I was gonna say this never happens, but I think really it happens by department, perhaps like if there's a holiday party or something arranged where it's an evening event, but I would say that on like county time, this would not ever happen. Is that a fair distinction?
Yeah, I, I would agree. I just don't know if we need to put anything in there to cover, to cover us if, or does it really matter if it's not on county time, Chris? If departments are together.
Sorry, I was muted. So are you talking about if, if you have like a general county social where different departments will be there all together?
Yeah. So I think that this has come up like the, I think a while back, like a while back, the county was going to sponsor business after-hours or something at the county courthouse and then one at the airport or something like that. And Michael, I don't know if you remember that. I don't know if they went through the process of getting a liquor license from the city or a permit to serve alcohol on the premises. Where they spot, where the county actually sponsored that event. And then if county staff was there, I don't know if this would be applicable in a situation like that.
Yeah, that would be one place that I could think about it. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know if I was, this mic was working or not. That the county, that, that might have happened because I think, you know, we have done it at the airport. But I believe that the Chamber of Commerce handled all of, you know, all part of it. The county didn't have anything to do with that. But it was on the premises. So.
Yeah, I know the chamber gets it, the special event, you know, the banquet license, if you will, for like the business after-hours thing. So it's usually not the host that is required to, to get that.
Yeah, I think the only thing the county covered, you know, was like the, the snacks or whatever, the hors d'oeuvres or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I mean, if we, if we had county staff working that event, I would think that we would, if you're, if you're actually working that event, you would not be consuming any kind of alcoholic beverage at that event because you would be in charge of that facility.
Right. That would be, that would be where I would come from with that. You know, and the other point that you were making, like Public Works at Christmas time used to usually have a get-together, a party, like a potluck dinner at the Elks Lodge or something like that where alcohol is served, but they're there on their own time. They do, it's not required that they be there. It's just a time to get together and celebrate a little bit, you know, that we made it through another year.
Yeah.
But that's the only other time that, you know, and the county really doesn't sponsor it. I mean, yeah, it's Public Works together, but you know, it's not county-sponsored. It's a potluck dinner.
Got it. I think hearing from these different perspectives, it sounds like alcohol in the workplace under, under these circumstances is an alcohol-free workplace. So I don't think we necessarily need to include this verbiage in there. If this is not something that would typically come up.
Well, and especially if it's, you know, for example, if Public Works decided they wanted to have their holiday party at the office instead and serve alcohol and stuff, I think that's where it really starts to get into a gray area and your liability risk really comes up.
Yeah, I, I think the only parties that, you know, we have like is like a going away party or something that alcohol is not allowed on the county premises. And we know that. That's one of the reasons we do it after hours, you know, like the Christmas party after hours at, at another place, you know, like the Elks Lodge. And it's not on county property and it, and you know, it's not on county time.
Got it. All right. Let's see. So just a comment here in regards to the, the verbiage failure to return company property in working order may result in payroll deductions to replace the missing property or equipment. I'm not sure if this is something that you are currently doing, but I would highly recommend having the employees when they are assigned those, that equipment or whether it's uniforms, equipment, whatever it is, that they sign a form indicating that they, that they will, that they acknowledge the payroll deduction that might result if it's failed to be returned. Although you are including it in your handbook, anytime you are deducting pay for any reason, it's just very important to have that. So I know we do have a sample form for this, if that, that is not currently in place. So I'm happy to pull that and share that with you as well.
Yeah. What, is there a form, Kayla, that the county uses for, you know, when equipment is issued? Cause I know we have had a couple of instances where terminated employees didn't return all the stuff they were supposed to, but I wasn't sure if we actually knew what all they had.
No, I'm not entirely sure if that is captured on our, our payroll change form, which is where it used to be captured. Where we would take like an inventory of like serial numbers of laptops and cell phones and that type of thing assigned to a person and then check those back in on their payroll change form when, when they're, when they're no longer employed with us. But I think that we can probably make an addition to that form to, to capture that information. I wonder too, Catherine, I haven't gone past this point in here. If you capture anything about email communications to and from county employees are, may, are considered public communications. Same with text messages on, on phones and maybe subject to a court request. And, and the other thing I'm, I'm curious about is if we wanted to capture anything in here about the retention of data, like you know, if, if there's pending litigation, you must, you know, or like, don't delete emails because of you know, potential pending litigation or future litigation or whatever, so that we're not in a position where we have any spoilage of, of discovery documents. Amber, I see you have your, your hand up. Sorry, Sarah, go ahead.
No, no, Amber, go ahead first. Cannot hear you.
Sorry. I have one place. I have to unmute. So the new payroll change form that we put into place last year does not have that space to request like what you need that employee to have and track numbers or serial numbers or keys or those types of things. So we're not currently tracking that. It's really up to each department. And then the other thing I'm wondering about, if you guys have discussed, is that idea of payroll deductions. So it's something that I've been wanting to do because we have had employees leave with, you know, small pieces of, you know, keys or door cards or whatever in the past. And I think we, Tara doesn't have a policy or any guidance on like how to do that. And I don't know if this is the place to put something like that. But I think finance might be wanting something supplemental to kind of guide them in how and when that happens.
Yeah, I think that's good, good notes. And I, I am fairly certain that IT is tracking what is given to each employee. And I want to say that I, you know, I had seen recently that there is a document that asks what those needs are. So I, I, I don't know. I, I don't think that's on the payroll change form, but I think it is another form on onboarding. That's filled out by the supervisor, but clearly something we should clarify.
Yeah, Sarah, I think if that exists, it is not something that's being shared with supervisors because I just brought on a full-time staff person and I didn't fill out any of that. And I gave her keys and a door card and equipment at the aquatic center. So I think if, if it exists, there's a gap in how that's being distributed.
Okay.
Yeah, I think on the, on the old payroll change form, it had an additional, like a supplemental page with it that said, you know, will this employee need a computer? Will this employee need access to the, to the building? If so, which buildings? And then typically what would happen is through the onboarding process, you would check that and, and send them to those relative departments to get the personal effects that they personal effects that they would need to do their job. So I think we can, I think we can work on that though internally, Sarah, and work with Amit and Michael to track that information, probably.
Yeah, and I, and also to the, to your question about retention policies through email. I know, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not finding if it's in here right now. But I think it's worth, not necessarily outlining the policy, but similar to what we have right now, something to the effect of monitoring or, there you go, okay. We we do need to develop a retention policy for our emails and we have the ability to put like litigation hold on certain accounts. And, you know, I'm not sure if that's something we need to identify and call out in the handbook, but it is something that we need to, we need to work through and set up better.
Yeah, I think at least from the employee handbook standpoint, perhaps just a a comment that the the organization or the county reserves the right to maintain a retention policy and employees are expected to follow that. Sounds like those specifics aren't in place at the moment, and I think that's fine. It might not even live in the handbook, but at least a comment to make folks aware that that is something that they should be that they should look for. If they have questions about what should be deleted, when it can be deleted, that hopefully that will at least call attention to having those conversations. So yes, I think I will highlight this and I will craft some new language around that. And then just to reiterate with regards to those, the tracking of equipment and and tools and things like that. I think the tracking systems are great. That will certainly help. But just wanted to reiterate that you do need, you do want to collect those employee signatures. So it's not simply having a spreadsheet to track those doc, those items, but also having the employee acknowledge what those payroll deductions would be. And were possible specifically outlining what the cost might be of replacement, say of a computer or of keys, so that they're very, there is a lot of transparency there on what payroll deductions could be, could impact them.
Would we want to put on those forms during the onboarding process, here's the cost of your computer or your phone or whatever that might be?
If it's, oh, sorry, go ahead, Chris.
Well, no, I was gonna say, I, I think that would be difficult because equipment replacement cost, you you would reasonably have to depreciate it if it's older and that type of thing. So I I wouldn't put specific costs in there. I think that unless you're going to do it from, if you attach to the form and inventory, if you will, of the equipment they were issued and the purchase cost for the county of it at that time, that would give them enough, I think, of a heads up of, oh, if I lose or break this, this is what it may cost me. Without you being in a situation where you have a document where all of a sudden what you have to replace cost a heck of a lot more than what it costs when you issued it to them. And they want to argue that, well, no, I should only be responsible for what the original one cost.
Yeah, that's a very, very valid point.
Here's a good example. We have some radios that are on loan to us from the South Central Region. And they run fifteen hundred to three thousand dollars apiece. And yes, they are checked out to the person that has them and they are responsible for them because of of the South Central Region tracks them.
So I think what you would want to do is that the form that the employee signs when they accept, when they they're given the equipment is that it needs to reference that they would be responsible for the replacement cost. And then, like I said, if you end up perhaps attaching some sort of a document to that statement that says, you know, what the county, what it costs the county to to get that equipment for them, you know, the the whole idea here is to give them some idea of their responsibility without locking the county into a specific amount.
Great. All right. So this question that I had here is in regards to this notice of privacy protections for personal health information. Typically, I wouldn't see this included in employee handbook. Again, discretion, if your discretion, if you would like to keep it. I'm not sure how much you are collecting personal information. We do have that confidentiality policy earlier in the handbook. So maybe that covers some of those more common situations where you might collect it for, say, benefits enrollment. Yeah, we can, we can keep it in certainly if that is your preference.
Sarah, perhaps you can help us. This policy refers to the fact that the county has appointed a county privacy officer. And off the top of my head, I'm not remembering who that might be.
Don't think we have one.
That's why I was like, who, who would that person be? You know, my suggestion, I I think is that, you know, this is, it's intended, I think, to kind of put people on notice of HIPAA. HIPAA protections and that type of thing. So if the county doesn't currently have a privacy officer, you, you would probably end up having this, that that officer, but I mean, by default would likely be your HR director.
Yeah.
And so I I just think there's a lot, the county's subject to that law, you know. Handbook doesn't need to to have policies or reflect all employment related laws that the county may be subject to. And this is one that has a tendency to be very complex in interpretation and what responsibilities are, and also what happens when you don't meet your responsibilities. So this is one that, yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not sure I recommend keeping it, but if there's, I I'm also not familiar as to how it ended up being a part, if there was something that happened in the past or something like that, that why it ended up being a part of the handbook.
I don't know if I can answer that, but I think this should be in in HR policies and clearly outlining, you know, record keeping and and professional and confidential requirements of working in that capacity.
Hey, Chris, I have a question for you. On DOT policy, I am the one that's in charge of all the DOT records for the county.
Right.
Like our workers, when they get tested for alcohol and drugs, I keep all of that under lock and key.
Good.
Because I am responsible and Mabel, as the second person in charge of that, is responsible for that. And I know that the HR person has asked for that information and I'm going to continue to refuse to give it to her because I'm personally responsible for that. Now, if somebody orders me to give it to her, I can do that, but you know, it still comes down on me when the federal DOT comes after me.
Well, and so here's, I I guess the question would be typically you want, you know, your HR department to be your central repository of personnel information so that there's not a bunch of it out there in different departments and such. If there's a specific requirement for your department to have certain information, I I don't see a problem with you retaining it, but I would also not see a problem with it being a copy of it being retained by human resources. But to the extent it has, you know, non-public information, like personal health information, like we're talking about here, which, you know, the results of drug testing and stuff very well may, then it should not be put in the employee's regular personnel file. It should go into a a separate file that would include, you know, any of their medical history information, that type of thing instead.
Right, yeah, because this information used to get passed around the county. And yeah, I know, and but so basically, my point is, is it's under lock and key. The only access to it is Mabel and myself because we're both certified to do the testing. We we don't do the testing. A third party comes in and does the testing. But under her, we're certified to take care of those records. And like I said, you know, if there is no pertinent medical information, like, you know, they went to the doctor for this or that, that all goes to to HR.
Right.
The only thing that's kept there is their DOT records.
So here's, here's a suggestion I think that might help is perhaps for the employees that are subject to the DOT testing that you just sent, when, when the testing is done, you just send a a note to HR to let them know that that you have those records. So that if a question comes up as to whether testing was done, not the results of anything like that, but what employees are subject to the testing, then that information, you know, at least just the notice as to who has that information is in their personnel file. So if questions come up, folks know where to find it.
No, that would be fine.
All right. I think we are nearing the end. Yeah, that was the last question that I had specifically added in the comments. So I've got some notes and things to just fine tune within the document. I can also, I can share those out perhaps by midday tomorrow. What we've kind of worked on. And then, Chris, I don't know if you wanted to take that new draft and and put comments in it with your team and and get those back to me. And then we can always do a a third and final draft if that might work best. But I also am I'm happy to take any other comments, questions, anything up for discussion for the remaining time that we have on the call today as well. But just wanted to share what those next steps look like from my end.
And and so just to answer the first part of your comment, my team is the royal we, as in me, myself and I on this stuff. So I think for efficiency of you know, my time and and the use and stuff, it would probably be better for me to review the revised draft instead of bits and pieces or something. So if I can, I can wait until we have a revised draft of the handbook. Catherine, with with your updates from today, and then I can go in and like I said at the beginning, you know, the stuff I started coming, you know, I could just transfer, cut and paste that into the new draft and then finish reviewing the rest of it and circle back around with my comments.
Okay, great. Sounds like a plan. So any other, any other elements of the handbook that you have questions about? Anything else we should discuss while we all have the time together?
I don't have anything else. I just have a running list from this conversation and our last of some of those supplemental aspects that we will want to get to as a board. But outside, outside the handbook.
Got it.
Thank you.
Great, of course. All right, well, everyone gets some time back, it looks like. So thanks again for for the work session. And yeah, we'll be in touch soon. I'll be in touch soon.
Thanks for your work, Catherine.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.